Good evening. My name's Dean Kilburg and I'll be chairing this evening's Committee of the Whole Meeting. I'm a third word alderman. As an informational piece, the Committee of the Whole Meetings are chaired on a rotation basis by all the aldermen over the course of the year. And tonight's my night. Tonight we have a presentation for the council. Let the record show that all the aldermen are present except Alderman Burkhardt. I would anticipate she'll be joining us here shortly. Tonight we have a presentation. Item A, Geneva High School Baseball Team Nick Hanson Memorial Scoreboard Fundraiser. Tonight we have with us Mike and Lynette Davis who are here on behalf of the fundraiser and the family. Tragically, Nick Hanson lost his life in an automobile accident last year. Nick was a 2016 graduate of Geneva High School. And Mike and Lynette are here to share some of their activities as it relates to remembering Nick. So if you'd like to come forward and if you'd introduce yourself again and your address, it'd be appreciated.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. My name is Mike Davis. This is my wife Lynette. Thank you all for having us tonight.
If you could give us your address as well.
Sure. Our address is 0 North 620 Titus Place, T-I-T-U-S, in Geneva.
Or Mill Creek.
Mill Creek. We live in the Mill Creek neighborhood. We're neighbors with this guy. We used to be. So thank you again for having us. I'll try to get through this statement as quickly as I can so you guys can get on with the real business here.
Maybe elevate the mic just a little bit so we can hear you a little bit better.
Ladies and gentlemen, citizens of Geneva, my wife Lynette and I have lived in Geneva for 20 years. During the course of that time, we have raised four wonderful kids. Through our kids' school and sports, we have, we and our kids have met so many wonderful families and have made many wonderful friends. One of those families and some of those kids are the Hansons. Anybody that knows the Hansons knows that they epitomize what a Geneva family is all about. They're about the community. And now, the community is about the Hansons. This past October 2016, Geneva High School graduate Nick Hanson was killed in a car accident. This tragedy hit our community very hard, but what happened next was nothing short of amazing. The community turned out and forced to support the family. The amount of people that came out to the gatherings truly was amazing. The outpouring of support was a direct result of the stamp that Nick and the Hanson family have put on this community. Now, we need for the community to step up once again. To honor Nick, we are raising money to buy a new scoreboard for the high school baseball field that would, that will be dedicated to Nick. This scoreboard will be one that Geneva High School players and families can be proud of for many years to come. As has been the case with other former high school athletes that have left us too soon, Nick had a passion for sports, especially baseball. I am very grateful and happy to say that Craig Shodine and the Shodine Family Foundation have agreed to match whatever funds we raise up to $9,000. $9,000 represents half of the total that we need to buy an $18,000 scoreboard. We spoke about community. As everyone knows, the Shodine family has been a huge part of the Geneva community since its existence. Many years ago, the Shodine Family Foundation was formed. The Shodine family has resided in Geneva since 1967. The Shodine Family Foundation was established with the desire to give back to the communities where they live, work, play, and attend schools. Thanks to the Shodine family and the Shodine Family Foundation for their very generous contribution. At the end of this presentation, Shodine Homes President Craig Shodine has, would offer, would like to say a few words. Other local businesses that have agreed to help us are Boner Beef in St. Charles, Old Town Pub in Geneva, and Nobel House in Geneva. Boner Beef will be giving back 25% of all proceeds on Thursday, January 11th, this coming January, when customers show a flyer, a fundraiser flyer, either a paper version or on their phone. To get a copy of the flyer, please email myself or my wife Lynette. Our email addresses are listed on this, on this presentation. You can also get a copy of the flyer on the GHS website in the athletics section. I think more specifically, it's in the schedule section of the athletics section. Thanks to Boner Beef and special thanks to 2017 GHS grad Haley Tamms for helping us to start this effort. Old Town Pub has agreed to give us back 25% of all sales from Thursday, January 18th. Special thanks to Chris at Old Town for this very generous offer. Nobel House has generously agreed to give back 10% of their total sales from Tuesday, January 23rd. So please eat at Nobel House on that day. Thanks to, thanks to Jason Levin at Nobel House for his very generous offer. I also want to thank Dave Heen from the Daily Herald for promoting our cause in yesterday's newspaper in the neighbor section. Please help by donating whatever you can. Every little bit will help. You can donate by either going to gofundme.com and you can search for Nick Hanson scoreboard at GoFundMe and you'll, you'll find the fundraiser. Or if you want your tax, if your donation, if you would like your donation to be tax deductible, you can write a check to the Geneva High School All Sports Boosters. Please reference baseball scoreboard on the subject line so they know to apply it towards our, our effort here. To all those that have already donated and are yet to donate, thank you very much. And there's also a reference where checks can be mailed at the bottom of this. And one more thing that I want to mention that kind of came up today is our, our current scoreboard is very old. I actually read an article in the paper today about a limestone building that's over by the old Mill Race Inn site that the Shodines are, I think, developing. And this building was referenced as possibly the oldest building in all of Geneva. And I think our scoreboard is the second oldest building in all of Geneva. So please help us to get a new one.
One other thing is if you are attending the Old Town fundraiser or the fundraiser over at Nobel House, you don't need a flyer or anything on your phone. It's just anybody who comes into the restaurant on those days. Or if you make mention, that just kind of helps them, I think, kind of know how many people are actually coming to participate in that. Thank you everybody so much.
So at this point, I think Craig would like to say a couple of words. Thank you very much.
Thanks, Mike and Lynette. Welcome.
Hi, I'm Craig Shodine, lifelong resident of Geneva. So I have to correct Mike. I was born at Geneva Community in 1962. We've been here my whole life. So '67, my daughter, my sister was born in '66 and she's the baby. So do you want more history? We grew up in Woodland Hills until fifth grade.
We're familiar with the name.
Kindergarten, moved here. Mike, Mike, I reside at 105 South River Lane, Geneva, Illinois. Okay, now I can start? I'm not very good at public speaking.
It's all yours.
Mike called me, what, on my way down to Florida for Christmas break and brought this up. And I said, well, why don't we do a matching funds campaign? How much is the scoreboard? He said, 18,000. I go, great, we'll, we'll give you 9,000 if you can get the community to pitch in nine. But I said, if you don't raise nine, if you raise 6,500, I'm giving you 6,500. Well, I said right away, he goes, we're already up to like 1,300. I said, great, I'll call my people, have them send you a check for a grand. And I said, tell me on December 31st how you did. He sent me a text, we're up to 21,700. I go, so I owe you 11,700. He said, that would be right. I said, for 2017. And here's your check.
Thank you very much.
So now combined, they've got over $4,300 already started.
$3,300.
No. You said you raised 21, I raised 21 also.
Right, as of today, we're.
And now they just raised even more now. So in 2018, we've agreed to match whatever they raise. It's our hope that as a community, we all come together and we raise it this year and it would give us, it would be a pleasure to pay for the scoreboard this year. I don't know, I could say more, but I think that's, I think it's a wonderful cause and I think it's a great, what Mike is doing is I think an excellent foundation for future fundraising. And selfishly, I said to Mike, you know, you know, when you pull this off, and I know you will, will you chair the fundraising committee to do a scoreboard in honor of my son on the lacrosse field that my family donated in Mill Creek? And he said, absolutely, I'll be the chair. And I said, we'll, we'll sponsor half of that as well. And if we can get some of these memorial scoreboards up there?
Yeah, thank you, Craig. Appreciate it.
Sorry.
That's okay.
That's all I have to say. Thanks for your support.
I, I'm sorry, I have one more quick thing. Nick Hanson had a little brother Ian who is currently a senior at, at Geneva High School and a baseball player. And it's going to take us about six weeks to order and install this scoreboard. And it really is our goal to get that scoreboard ordered sometime in February so that we can, we can have it up and ready to go for this season so, so Nick's brother can, can see that happen. So any help that the community can give us, we would appreciate it very much.
And we're starting tonight. So I mean, that means anybody in the room? Even you, Mr. Mayor? I actually also, now that I've recomposed myself, I said to Mike, I hope this does, we do get it this year, I'm willing to cut a check now for the balance, but I want to make sure the community steps up. I don't want to give 9,000 and find out the community gave 7,100. So if everybody jumps in and we get this done in a month, we'll give them the check, we'll get the scoreboard ordered and we'll be done. So everybody's help would be really appreciated.
Thank you so much.
All right. Thank you.
No, this is, this is a way that the community can support our high school and help memorialize young people have left us way too soon. And I know that the community's done this before. I mean, the speaker system at the high school football stadium memorializes a former Geneva High School student, our goalposts. When tragedy strikes, it's great that, that people that are a part of this community believe in this community and admire our young people, step forward and support an activity of this nature. So again, to the Davises and Mr. Shodine, thank you for coming this evening outlining your, your cause. And again, what an excellent way to remember these individuals and then provide something to the community that'll last and, and help serve future students that'll be coming through our high school, our elementary schools, middle schools, or whatever it might be over the years ahead. So good luck with your fundraising effort. And again, the information as it relates to this fundraiser, there's a GoFund. And then also, there is an address that, if you want to contribute, mail a check, you can mail that to the Geneva All Sports Boosters. And that address can be found at the High School Athletic website. Is that it? Okay. Thank you very much. Mr. Chair? Maybe there's a few questions. Alderman Bruno?
Yes, I, is there an electronic version of, of this that could be shared with the city council? Several of us have social media pages that we can promote this on.
Yeah, we'll post it on our website too, Mike, if you give us.
Is there an address I can email that to?
You can just pull it up off the city website under.
Yeah, I'll be there.
Thank you.
Thanks again.
Yeah, thank you for your time. I think we've already figured this is going to be a rousing success.
It's on its way.
Yep.
Okay, item three, approved committee of the whole minutes from December 11th, 2017. Is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Moved by, by Marx, seconded by Bruno. Any comments, anything, any corrections, any additions to the minutes? If not, I take it we're prepared to vote. Those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Item four, letter, letter A, recommend approval of certificate of completion to Stanton Subdivision at 1708 Canville Road. Is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Moved by Bruno, seconded by Marx. Alderman McGowan?
I think normally this is one of the things that we vote on just as a formality, as I've heard from previous meetings. But I'm going to vote nay to this one because I, I'm still not happy that the Stanton subdivision was built without extending the sidewalk along Canville Road. So I just wanted to voice my opinion in that way.
Sure.
Thank you.
Thank you for sharing your, your nay vote. Any, any other comments? If not, a voice vote would be in order. Those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Nay.
Okay, we had two nay votes. Item B, recommend draft resolution authorizing purchase of 25 sets of structural firefighting turnout gear from the WS Darley in the amount of $50,248.76. Moved by McGowan, seconded by Marx. Discussion. I think it's self-explanatory from your, your commentary and your packet, the city of Geneva to be in compliance needs to replace these, it's really essentially the total gear every 10 years or when where dictates that it needs to be replaced. So this will equip or will replace 25 sets within the Geneva Fire Department. Any questions of the chief? I see that he's with us this evening. If not, a voice vote would be in order. Those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It's unanimous. Item C, draft resolution amending the city's personnel policy manual to comply with Public Act 100-0554 Sexual Harassment Policy. Moved by McGowan.
Second.
Seconded by Cummings. Again, this is to allow the city of Geneva to come in full compliance with the state of Illinois amended public act as it relates to state officials and employee ethic, the employee, State Officials and Employee Ethics Act. And this was passed into law in November of 2017. Again, we had a policy in place already. This, this brought about a few amendments to that policy. Is there any questions of staff? If not, a voice vote would be in order. Those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Item D, recommend draft resolution granting a final planned unit development approval including modifications of the approved landscaping, signage, building elevations, and site plan for Lot 1 of Fabian Crossing Parkway Construction and Associates. Is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Moved by Marx.
Second.
Seconded by Bruno. Discussion. Alderman Ruby?
I would just like to touch base on the, the height of the, the sign being at 43 feet for the, the entrance. Am I on the right topic?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Yes. Yes, this, this applies to the, the changes that would, that are impacting Gander Mountain as well as the, the old Dominick site, just so that everybody is, has a little bit of an idea that's watching on TV what we're talking about. Alderman Ruby, go ahead.
I, I just wanted to touch base on the, the height because it is higher than what is typically allowed. We're giving them permission to go higher, up, up to the 43 feet. So I just wanted to discuss that.
Maybe Mr. DeGroot can give us some clarification on that possibly. He may not be prepared to though.
Oh, sure. Thank you. The, the Fabian Crossing PUD has a maximum building height of 40 feet. The majority of this building elevation would be kind of at 23 feet. And then above the entrance, there's kind of the, the logo of the home. And the peak of that roof logo is at 46 feet.
Now you're referring to the, the Gander Mountain Building.
Correct. Right. The PUD does allow for some flexibility for architectural features. For example, kind of the, the sale tag logo that Best Buy has extends beyond that 40-foot maximum to 43 feet. So this, this at 46 feet is, is in keeping with that maximum height.
Alderman or Deki?
Thank you. Hey David, maybe you can clarify, are these the folks that are in the dispute right now with the, the development in that center?
The ownership, yes.
Okay, of this one? It should be nice if things were worked out and we move forward with all the plans in there. I'm not so certain that I'm prepared to approve this at this time until perhaps we see what outcome occurs between those two tenants. Do you have any thought or comment to that?
I guess.
I know we, we have both parties represented here this evening. So maybe they might have a comment or two as it relates to that topic.
Trying to get them all to play nice right now, yeah.
Our position has been to, to process the applications as they've been submitted. And that is a private matter between two, two private property owners and not to kind of stand in the way of, of the tenancy of these buildings.
Thanks, I'd love to hear from them if they're.
I think Mr. Lambert, Mark Lambert with Crown is, he raised his hand and asked to speak.
He jumped up, yeah.
You might want to speak to that or anything that you'd like to share at this time. And we'll get back to the council as well if anyone has any questions.
Thank you. My name is Mark Lambert. I'm president of the Crown Group, address 1564 West Agonquin Road, Hoffman Estates, Illinois. And I'm here to answer any questions that you might have on the dispute. And I did have a couple of comments on the technicalities, I guess, of the, of the ordinance that's proposed.
Mr. Chairman, point of order. I don't believe, forgive me, Mr. Lambert for interrupting, but as a point of order, I don't believe the dispute that we're addressing is relevant to the matter on the floor. And I would ask for the chair to rule on whether there is relevance and return back to the matter on the floor and voting on this issue.
Well, actually, my.
Let's see where he goes with this, okay?
My, my comments, so if you, you may recall that this committee of the whole, as well as the, the board, voted to grant an ordinance for what we had proposed in terms of redeveloping the Dominick's facility. And then that also included landscaping and signage and so on. In reviewing what the current applicant is asking for, we noted a couple of things. One is that the height, which was just discussed, is of course, would be the highest in the shopping center. This committee approved for us a height of 38 feet. And one of the reasons that they may be asking for that kind of a height is because of the lack of visibility that these stores have. So that goes back to what you approved for us was that we were going, we were given permission to basically take down all the old tall pine trees that are blocking visibility. And if that were to be implemented, then they may not need that kind of height. The second thing is that if you look at the ordinance you approved for us, that the, a portion of it is on Lot 1, which is the Gander Mountain property. And what you're being asked to approve tonight is inconsistent with what you've already approved for us on the overall landscaping plan. So those were my, my comments as to the ordinance itself. And if appropriate, if you want me to talk about the other matter in general, I'm happy to come back to the mic.
I think we'll defer on that. Would there be any questions as it relates to the PUD then, from any of the aldermen? We do have a few questions. Alderman Burkhardt, if you'd please stay up here, Mr. Lambert.
What you just said, are you trying to, are you saying that if we were to approve this tonight, what's before us, it somehow is superseding the landscaping plan that we already approved for you?
Well, I, I'm saying that's a possibility. I don't know the technical answer to that, but I'm bringing it to your attention that it is a possibility.
Okay, and we had, I think, one other question. Alderman.
It was on the same topic.
Do you have any questions for Mr. Lambert?
No, it's for David about that specific issue though.
Dave, if you'd want to address Alderman Maladre's question?
Which is, how, how is the landscape of Lot 1 of that development inconsistent with what we approved for the landscaping of the rest of that development?
Sure. So the, the landscaping that is being proposed tonight is for missing materials in the interior parking lot islands and then some perimeter landscaping along Fabian Parkway. Otherwise, there's no changes being proposed to what's out there today. The landscaping that was approved when Dominick's and Fresh Time came through was more for the perimeter along Randall Road and then the center drive aisle. And again, there's no changes being proposed to that tonight. So it would not, in my opinion, does not conflict with the previous approval.
So I, I don't know if this makes sense, but one area where that inconsistency might be a problem is height. So is, is it possible that what goes on Fabian Parkway could be high enough to hinder visibility of the buildings on Lot 2 from Fabian Parkway?
I guess without pulling up the plan, I, as I recall, it was more along the, the building side of Fabian Parkway than it was blocking the visibility to the, to the front of the building.
Mr. Lambert, you had something you'd like to share?
Yeah, it's in, in reviewing the, what was approved for us and what is being proposed now, I, I think that you will find that on Fabian Parkway itself, there is a difference in what you approved for us and what they're proposing. And I'm pretty sure that even in, in the interior, we were going to change the, some of the landscaping in the islands, which they're saying they're, they're going to keep the way it is or, or originally was many years ago.
So you're going to say, you're saying then that there's going to be inconsistencies as it relates to the islands within the?
I, I believe that's a correct statement. I mean, I'd have to sit down and compare tree to tree, but I know for a fact in, on Fabian Parkway, that there is a difference.
Any additional questions? Ms. Moran, Ms. Moran is with the Fabian, or with the, why don't you tell us who you're with?
Okay, I'm with Parkway Construction.
Okay.
And Architecture or Associates. I thought maybe I could add some clarification on what we're actually proposing. The Gander Mountain site, which is what we're proposing to remodel for at home, is under a planned unit development. With that comes the ordinances that are in that contract as well as landscaping that's supposed to be established. So what we're proposing is just to abide by that, that existing document. So if that document isn't correct, then we need to be informed. But we're only, we typically go in and say, okay, as far as landscaping goes, we're going to replace or remove dead and then put in new plantings according to whatever that existing plan is. So we've done nothing more than propose what the current plan says we're supposed to do or supposed to be in place. As far as the, the signage goes, the, the planned unit development also states that that the height of the buildings could be 40 feet. Now, 40 feet is a, dependent on how you calculate the height of a building according to. to the International Building Code, the height of a building on a gable roof is a half the distance between the eve and the ridge of the house. That makes the, a forty-six-foot gable roof, forty feet. So, that would be the technical height of our building. The sign itself is well below that. So, I'm not sure when you're talking about the signage, what's getting in the way. Is that, did that help at all?
Anyone have any questions of Ms. Moran? Alderman Bruno?
Not yet, I was preparing.
Alderman Burkhardt?
Thanks for coming up here to talk to us. When you say existing plans, what year are you talking about? Is that from when this development was first built?
No, those, the planned unit development last was amended, as far as I can tell, in 2015. That's the last survey that we've gotten that was part of that update.
So, you'd be looking to restore the landscaping to what was called for in the 2015-
Yes.
-amended PUD? Okay, thank you.
And that's what we propose. Now, you know, I've heard some interesting comments about some of the trees. When we did an initial assessment on the site, when our landscape architect went out there and did the, an actual survey of the plantings, we found a number of trees that had been cut down. We don't have any documentation or indication why. So, it may have been somebody thought that it didn't give good exposure to the site, which doesn't surprise me because if you've been out there, it kind of sits in a hole. So, it's, any kind of height or anything that's up around that building is blocking the view. In actuality, the back corner, the southwest corner of that building, only sits about eight feet above the road grade. So, it's, you know, it's getting some exposure to all those buildings would probably be helpful.
Would you be looking to, I mean, is there kind of a standard look that At Home stores have? Would you be looking to replicate that at that site?
And that's, and that's what we've done. That's in our proposal as far as the building itself goes. The rest of it, as I said, we, our intent is to reestablish the plantings of landscaping according to the current approved planned unit development. So, nothing more, nothing less.
Okay, thank you.
Okay.
Any other questions of Mr. Moran? I think that does it. Thank you.
Okay, sure.
Alderman Maladra?
So, for David again, we approved the changes for Fabian Crossing. We approved the landscaping changes. I agree that we were talking only about Randall Road, but I thought we were also talking about the interior parking lot area as well, right? So, will it be a problem for our intent to have like trees in some of those islands and nothing, or different type of landscaping in the rest of those islands?
The interior islands that were proposed to be amended last year were mostly along the drive aisle and then within Lot Two itself. This is Lot One-
Right.
-that we're talking about. And they, they're not proposing any changes to those islands that are along the drive aisle. They're proposing the changes to the interior islands closer up to the store. Those were not part of the landscaping plans that were approved last year. Again, if you look at the draft resolution before you tonight, it's amending ordinances nineteen ninety-three forty-five and two thousand three something.
Right.
Not the 2017 ordinance that was approved last year. So, we're not proposing any changes to that overall landscape plan that was approved.
Do you don't see any sort of inconsistency that you think would conflict with what we're trying to accomplish with the 2017 changes?
I don't.
Okay, thanks.
Mr. DeGroot, could you give us a summation of what the plant commission's, was it unanimous vote? Were they, did they discuss the same issues we're talking about this evening to some extent?
It was a unanimous vote from the plant commission. They did not discuss the private dispute amongst the property owners. And no, to answer the question, no, we did not get into the inconsistencies.
Thank you. Mr. Lambert, did you want to say something else?
I was looking at the ordinance that was passed for us, and I don't know if it's fair to, but anyway, you can see along Fabian Parkway that we did have approval to change the landscaping. And then, as that gentleman was saying, we were going to change it on the roadway, interior roadway.
Alderman Bruno?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Director DeGroot, the PUD that we approved for, it's referred to Lot Two, is that appropriate? Not this parcel, but the neighboring parcel. Did they ask for more height than what was granted?
They did not, because the maximum building height in the PUD is forty feet. So, at thirty-eight feet, they did not need to ask for any additional relief. The PUD does give flexibility beyond that forty feet for what's defined as an architectural feature. So, like I said, the Best Buy logo kind of protruding beyond that, or in this case, their main entryway protruding beyond that.
So, just so I'm clear, if you could restate what's before us tonight, is that in conflict with the plantings along Fabian that we approved for the Lot Two?
Again, the landscape plans that were approved last year were for the entire development. So, it crossed all lots, including lots one through four and all the outlots. But did not include that interior, basically anything north of that main drive aisle for Lot One.
So, what is before us tonight is just the interior of the parking lot and the facade?
Yeah, I wish, I wish I had known this would have been a larger discussion. I would have prepared an exhibit to kind of show those differences.
I'm looking at a map. Thank you.
Mr. Lambert?
Mr. Chairman, a point of order. I'd like to reaffirm my opposition to this discussion. This is, this is perilously close to the city of Geneva, if not directly taking sides, leaning toward one side or the other, which is in essence, a private property matter regarding covenants and restrictions that is being settled through the adjudication process in Kane County. The next hearing date is January twenty-fifth. For this community to engage in this discussion risks drawing us into that lawsuit, I think is a risk that we should not be taking for the record.
Well, if I understand their landscaping plan, they're putting new trees on Fabian Parkway. I just showed everybody what was approved for us on Fabian Parkway. So, am I correct? Are you putting new trees on Fabian Parkway?
Okay, Alderman Maladra?
Yeah, so my point was, I agree with the mayor about the matter of the conflict between the two property owners. What I'm looking for is whether or not what we're proving tonight conflicts with what we approved previously for Fabian Crossing. And so, what David just said a minute ago, I thought, was that everything on the exterior, Randall Road and Fabian Parkway included, was consistent with what we approved in 2017. And the interior part of Lot One would be something different, but I don't, I don't know. I just don't want to, I don't want to approve anything tonight that-
Conflicts.
-negates what we agreed to with the Fabian Crossing improvements in 2017. It's like, what were we trying to accomplish when we approved that? And then we just turn our backs on it.
I think that's what we're trying to clarify here. Anything else? Alderman Bruno?
I would, I would move that we tabled this to the next meeting after the adjudication date, to have it resolved at the court before we vote on this.
Is there a motion to table? Is there a second?
Ask me a date certain, too.
The date being determined by the adjudication.
Well, but, Mr. Chairman, the risk is that the adjudication gets continued yet again. Where does this recommendation stand? My recommendation, ladies and gentlemen, is that we advance this matter, we take a vote. If the vote is successful, we have between now and the sixteenth of January to research some additional information. I would say that with a caveat, that I would again state that the presence of our good friend here is irrelevant to the decision tonight. And I think certainly this council, I think this chairman, I in particular, would have welcomed the phone call. I understand you spoke with our staff today, indicated that you might, quote, "show up tonight and speak against this matter." I also understood that you were perhaps considering giving me a phone call. I would have advised you strongly, no need to come up and rebut. I would have advised him strongly, Mr. Chairman, not to do that. This is not a matter for the city of Geneva to delve into with respect to two private property owners arguing over covenants. That is in David Ackerman's hands. The judge will make a decision soon enough. Our matter is to whether or not we wish to embrace At Home, or do we wish to throw the entire Fabian Crossing development at risk? Because guarantee you, once this meeting is tuned in by the other developers, there's a fifty-fifty chance the level return to this community.
I withdraw my motion.
He's withdrawn his motion. Okay, any other commentary? Any other comments from the aldermen? Alderman Burkhardt?
I guess I feel as if, in a way, this is too, I mean, I guess I'm listening to these two sides just as I was, I would if we were hearing from a property owner of an individual home who, single-family home, who was asking for a waiver and had a neighbor who was opposing it. I guess I'm not really thinking of it in terms of the pending litigation, but we're being told we have someone applying for a PUD amendment, and then we have the neighboring property opposing it. I'm really stuck on this tonight, honestly. I wish we could table it for two weeks and at least gather more information and address it again at a count when we have, perhaps David has the time to have us a presentation. It seems like there's, I don't want to, I don't want to jeopardize. I think we're lucky to have it in this retail environment, that we have three big-name stores that want to relocate to Randall Road, we're pretty lucky to have. And I've been disappointed that that's even at risk, but I'm really struggling with this right now. So, if anybody else has any wisdom to share, I'd like to hear it. Thanks.
That was not a motion to table. Alderman Rodecky?
Yeah, I'm kind of sorry I brought this up because I agree with the mayor. I think you're absolutely correct. And I get what you're saying, Alderman, and maybe this will, this is what helps me clarify it, is in the scenario that you described about private homeowners objecting to somebody, the initial homeowner, the initial individual got exactly what they asked for and agreed to it. The second one that now comes before us is asking for nothing, for no variance, for no exception, for no, anything from what we've already said was an approved PUD. So, you know, I don't know what else we can ask from them that would help me make a better decision. And I do agree with the risk of, this should stand on its own merits. I think the mayor's comments are on point, and the chairman and I agree with them. So, I think it's a disservice to delay it any further, that they should get an answer to the question, because I'm not certain anything else will come to light that will, you know, that will help me make a better decision on it. But I understand where you're coming from. Thank you.
Any other commentary? Okay, I take it we're prepared to vote then? If you'd please read the roll.
Mike Bruno?
Hi.
Sarah Burkhardt?
Aye.
Donald Cummings?
Aye.
Becky Ruby?
Aye.
Dean Kilburg?
Aye.
Craig Maladra?
Aye.
Richard Marks?
Aye.
Gene McGowan?
Aye.
Jim Rodecky?
Aye.
Robert Swanson?
Aye.
Okay, item E, recommend draft ordinance, zoning ordinance text amendment to Section eleven twelve nine to remove signs painted directly on the surface of an exterior wall of any building from the list of prohibited signs. Is there a motion to approve?
Second.
Moved by Mark, seconded by Cummings. Discussion. Okay, I think we're all familiar with the background on this. Does anyone need any additional information from Mr. DeGroot? Alderman Burkhardt?
I'll open the can of worms. So, David, we don't have any, anything that keeps owners of brick buildings from painting their entire structure. We're just talking about the ability to paint a sign on the, on the brick structure or any structure tonight. If we were to pass this, this would allow painted signs on any type of material anywhere in the city, correct?
That's correct. We don't require a permit to paint, but we do require permits for signs. So, once you paint the sign, a permit is required. But we don't allow painted signs directly on the surface, it's a prohibited sign, so.
And the plant commission and HPC, can you remind us their votes?
Yes, I think that the plant commission's recommendation was unanimous to uphold the ordinance as it's written, to prohibit painted signs directly on the surface of buildings. And the HPC was, I believe it was five to one. And the one that did not think it was necessary to uphold the ordinance, thought it would be okay to paint signs on surfaces that already have been painted. So, if the entire wall had already been painted, it would then be okay to paint the sign on that surface.
Have we, there, I looked, you did a great job, and I'm sure it took forever to like survey like twenty-three different communities, and it's, it really doesn't offer a lot of clarification because each one's different, some don't have historic district, it's there, but some communities do prohibit any painting of a certain type of brick, that kind of more porous brick that could be damaged by paint, it'll look like.
That's correct, especially in historic districts. We're trying to protect the original historic material. In those communities, though, they often will operate a little differently than we do in Geneva. They will require a certificate of appropriateness before you even submit a building permit. So, that means any exterior changes within the historic district or on a designated property goes to the Historic Preservation Commission before you even file a building permit. Where in Geneva, we are permit-driven. So, if the work does not require a permit, it does not go to HBC. So, that's why you could paint a historic structure in our community without HBC review.
So, you'd have to add another almost layer, or it's almost like a pre-cursor kind of thing before, if you, we were going to go down that road?
It would really be a fundamental change to the way we review projects in the historic district in Geneva. And it would, it would apply not only to commercial properties, but then to residential properties for any, any exterior change that today does not require a permit. So, that would, that includes painting, gutters, soffit, you know, those type of minor repairs that we typically don't review.
Do you think this is going to be pretty unique cases, that somebody wants to paint a sign? I mean, it seems like, honestly, a lot more work. You have to get an artist to, to do this as opposed to a sign-making shop or, you know?
To do it well, yeah.
To do it well, right, right, yeah.
We have seen other requests. We actually had one that we denied a few months back, to paint directly on the surface of a building. And they wound up painting it on, on a wood surface that they're going to then mount to the building. And I think we've had maybe one or two other requests in my time here, which is going on ten years now. I don't see it coming up very often.
So, and your recommendation is that we, your staff's recommendation is we change our ordinance to allow the painted signs?
No, I think our recommendation would be to uphold the ordinance as it's, as it's written. And if we're going to make exceptions to allow for it, I think we need to identify in what circumstances. Is it only on previously painted buildings? Is it only on previously painted buildings? Is that a survey that we then do now and say as of this date, so then there's not a loophole where you can then paint the surface of a building and then paint the sign on the building? So I think you're correct with your kind of lead-in, and there's a can of worms that we discovered with this.
Is that, Alderman Burkhardt?
I guess I'm reading, maybe I read that, I'm reading it wrong, and I'm glad I asked that question, because I feel like if an aye vote on this, a yes vote, would allow for signs to be painted directly onto walls.
That's correct. The way it's listed on the agenda is motions, to my understanding, should always be made in the affirmative, so the applicant's request was to remove that prohibition.
Okay.
And so I guess the HPC and the plant commission recommended against.
Against, I don't, okay.
What's listed on the agenda.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Thank you. Alderman Bruno?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I did watch the plant commission meeting, and there are sound arguments for not painting. I think the, I think the lead of this story is something, as you alluded to, is that we don't require building permits for painting, so we really don't have any way of protecting raw masonry buildings. I personally, as much as I would like to protect virgin masonry, I don't think we'd get any traction with adding another level of restrictions so that now people have to go through, you know, jump through a hoop for something they didn't have to before. I'm inclined to uphold the decisions of the HPC and the plant commission on this. Thank you.
Any other questions of staff? I take it we're prepared to vote then? Again, a yes vote would mean that we would approve a zoning ordinance text amendment to remove signs painted directly on the surface of an exterior wall of any building from the list of prohibited signs. A no vote would mean that we would keep the ordinance as it's presently written. Is that clear? Alderman Rodecky?
And if this fails, if it turns up nay, what impact does that have to the applicant? What would that compel them to do now?
I think it was back in October, when the sign was originally painted, they were cited for a violation. Their response to that notification was to apply for this text amendment, and then to accept the ruling of the council. So they would need to then paint over the sign and install a proper wall-mounted sign.
So they could paint over it, they would not have to remove it?
Correct. Or install a sign directly over it.
Alderman Bruno? I'm sorry, you weren't finished. Go ahead.
Maybe this is a bit, Mike probably could answer this better, but what was the point of not allowing this? Is it just degrading masonry property? I mean, the spirit and intent behind that was to not have people degrade, whether it's the historic district or not, masonry frontage, correct?
Correct. And then with painted signs, even if you're painting, let's say, the entire facade and it's not a sign, you're probably doing that less often than you would with a sign, because as tenants change, signs change more frequently than the entire building needs to be painted.
Okay, thank you.
Alderman Bruno?
And to be clear, at this point, we have, because they've been going through the process as prescribed, we have levied no fines to date.
That's correct.
And we, they'd have some window to resolve the signage before we would, they would incur any fines over it.
That's correct.
Thank you.
I had one question also. If you look at the sign, obviously you see Kraft Urban, and there's a U above the sign, what's the impact as relates to non-litters? In other words, let's say you put a flag, or a bird, or you put a pizza, you painted a pizza on the side of a building, does that fall under the current ordinance?
There's a very fine line between what is a sign and what is not a sign. If it's a mural that doesn't really represent what they're selling with inside the building, it doesn't contain a commercial message, you can argue that that's art and not a sign. So for, in this example, the wavy, you know, the wavy red, yellow, and blue is not considered part of the sign. The U within the C is their logo, so that would be considered part of the sign.
Okay, so that would have to come down then?
Correct.
Okay, just wondered how that was treated. Okay, anyone else? Looks like we're ready to vote. And again, I'll clarify that. In other words, a yes vote would mean that the sign stays, no vote means that the sign would be painted over. Okay? Or replaced in some manner. Okay? If you'd please read the roll.
Mike Bruno?
Nay.
Tara Burkhardt?
Nay.
Donald Cummings?
Nay.
Becky Ruby?
Nay.
Dean Kilburg?
Nay.
Craig Maladra?
Nay.
Richard Marks?
Nay.
Jean McGowan?
Nay.
Jim Rodecky?
Aye.
Robert Swanson?
Nay.
It's unanimous. Okay. That brings us to...
Just a point of order. Even though it's not recommended here, it still has to go to the city council for actual formal, but ordinarily, when a vote would die here, it wouldn't move forward, but because of the way this is done, you still would need to vote again on Monday, or Tuesday of next week.
Okay.
It'll be on the consent agenda, but we'll have to word it differently to reflect what the vote actually was.
Okay. Any new business this evening? Yes, come forward, please, introduce yourself. Welcome to City Hall.
Thank you. Good evening to everybody. My name is Andres Slocumbergs, I live at six fifteen Anderson Boulevard. I've spoken to a few of you about this project, it's a solar project. I want to seek support from the city of Geneva for an educational program for residents and businesses to learn more about solar power, and along with education, provide an opportunity to get lower than usual prices for solar. I've been working with Midwest Renewable Energy Association to set up this solar group-by program in Geneva and King County. We expect to roll the program out in the next few weeks. Midwest Renewable Energy Association is a nonprofit established in nineteen ninety with the goal of promoting renewable energy through education and demonstration. It works throughout Illinois, Wisconsin, and Minnesota, and has organized dozens of these type of programs throughout the region. For our solar group-by program, Midwest Renewable Energy Association is the lead organizer, but is also being supported by the Illinois Solar Energy Association, the Sierra Club of Fox Valley, and others. For those of you unfamiliar as to how a solar group-by program works, let me summarize. A group-by program entails negotiating volume discounts with solar installers for the benefit of homeowners and businesses. This is done through an RFP process that is open with an advisory committee consisting of community leaders. This would be similar to an RFP organized by a municipality. Educational sessions are organized throughout the community, educating homeowners, businesses, and others on solar power, and promoting solar purchases during a fixed period of time, typically around four to six months. The more homeowners sign up and choose to install solar, the lower the price of installations. Group buys are important tools for scaling solar deployment in a market in a short period of time. When done correctly, they can be beneficial to everyone involved. They work by aggregating demand for solar, usually in a small geographic area, achieving economies of scale. They lower the installer's soft costs further by providing upfront customer education en masse, leading to a higher-than-average conversion rate for solar leads. Home and business owners see lower prices for their solar array, and communities move toward achieving their sustainability goals. Everybody wins. Some communities or municipalities will hire their own renewable energy experts to promote green policies. Some municipalities will organize their own group-by program, but this takes time, knowledge, and expertise, and investment of effort. Midwest Renewable Energy Association is offering to do this education at their cost and organize the group by. At this time, Geneva has agreed to participate on the advisory committee that will help select the solar installer, and agreed to expedite the permitting process for these installations. While this support is appreciated, it would be great if Geneva would also help support and promote the educational program. By supporting this program, this is another opportunity to show your constituents that Geneva cares about the environment and promotes renewable energy. The planned education sessions called Power Hours will give residents and others a full overview of solar power, the how, the how long, how it works, what it costs, et cetera, and choice on moving forward on installation. In Geneva, there are only a handful of installations currently that have been put up. That's a pretty minimal impact. Our goal is to change that. The residents of this community are looking to have their city lead on promoting renewable energy. Similar education programs supported by other municipalities have jump-started dozens, if not hundreds, of solar installations. The city of Urbana supported this type of program in Champaign County in two thousand and fifteen, and as a result, eighty-two homes and businesses installed solar. They ran the program again in two thousand and seventeen, and additional fifty-eight homes and businesses installed solar. Glen Carbon and Madison County supported a group by organized by Midwest Renewable Energy Association last year with a similar result. Other communities have had MREA help them organize these programs, including in Bloomington-Normal and in Chicago. What I'm pointing out is that supporting and promoting the solar group-by program is not unusual for a municipality. The municipality supports the education part of the program. Any solar installation that is purchased is a transaction between the homeowner or business owner and the solar installer that has been selected through an RFP process organized by MREA. We do appreciate the support we are receiving from Geneva, and ask that the council consider helping promote the program as well. If any one of you needs additional information on the program, or know of others interested in participating in this solar group-by program, please pass along the info or have them contact me. Since we are running this program throughout King County, contact with other community leaders would be very helpful. That's it, thank you.
You might want to forward whatever information you'd like to have disseminated to staff, and then they can get that to us at some point in time.
Okay, I actually have a handout I can give out to the board.
Okay, thank you. Is there anyone else that has any new business before the council this evening?
Just a reminder, with the holiday next week, the council meeting is on Tuesday, seven o'clock, in this room.
City council meeting next Tuesday, the sixteenth, rather than Monday, the fifteenth. Is there a motion to adjourn?
No motion.
Moved by Marx, is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Bruno, those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? We stay in adjourned. Thanks to all for coming out tonight.